All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 1st Board of Commissioners meeting. We call the meeting into order. The first item tonight is invocation and pledge of allegiance. And as always, we don't have anyone signed up. I'll invite anyone in the audience. If you would like to deliver the invocation and lead us in a pledge of allegiance, you may step forward and do so. If there's no one, then I will ask Commissioner Beaumont this evening if he would do it for us.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening, Father, as we ponder the issues before this beautiful county we all live in. Lord, I pray that you would grant us wisdom as we consider the issues of the day. Lord, I thank you for the time that we had already today in discussions of our, this board's vision for continued development within the county. Lord, I ask that you would grant each member of this board wisdom as we consider the issues before us. Father, bless each and every person here. Lord, I pray that you would watch over them on their travels home, Father, that they would arrive so safely. Lord, bless this meeting. In Jesus' name I ask.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Next up is the Ethics Awareness and Conflict of Interest Reminder.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Anything, members? None? Thank you. All right. Next up is the Approval Agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I want to add an agenda amendment to amend closed session to include NCGS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the county attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Kitty? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Or any opposed? All right. Just so the public knows, the Board of Commissioners met this evening at 4:00 and had a work session to discuss one acre lot size going forward. We have some legislation coming through. That should reach us in June. And so, we're going to look at changing how we develop lots around the county and slow down development a little bit is the thought process there. We also talked about our timelines with the county staff about how text amendments move through and how to speed that process up a little bit. So, if we need to make a change, it doesn't take forever to do that, or what seems forever to do that. And also, we have, we're developing a calendar for the mainland businesses. So, we received some information on that this evening. We will be awarding that contract soon and putting out basically a business calendar in one location so that anybody in the county can go to one stop and find whatever's going on in their neighborhood or their region of the county at any given time and hopefully make it easier to find businesses in the county as well. The next up this evening is Public Comment. I will remind everyone that Public Comment is just that. It's Public Comment. It's a time for you to come up and address the board with anything that is a concern to you. We give you three minutes. We have a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. When the red light comes on, I would ask that you please wrap up your thoughts so we can move on to the next person and be respectful of their time. To the Board of Commissioners, we have kind of engaged with the, some of the people that have come up. I would like us to stop that practice. And if you have a thought or want to comment yourself on something someone said, reserve that for your, part of your commission report so that we're respectful of everyone's time that is coming in here too. And we're not getting into a debate. It is Public Comment, not Public Debate. Ms. Kitty, so I've been put today when she, and I talked about this. So, just be aware of that. And to the public, if you have questions, if you're up here to get answers to something and bring that before us, the staff or any of the commissioners or maybe a representative from your district would be happy to reach out to you and answer those questions. Many times, our staff will take a name and number down and give you a call back and explain whatever it is you're wanting to know or learn about. So, with that, the first person I have signed up is, seems to be our first person on the lot here, James Mills. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mark.
It's name and address for the record.
James Mills, 105 Chestnut.
Thank you.
Here we are, the day many have been waiting for. I want to jump right into a few things. Board, I want to know why. Why do I continue to hear from you that we need townhomes? We need apartments? Why did the residents have to pay $300? Why did the residents have to come here and beg for one acre lots? Why haven't we heard from these people that this board hasn't stopped talking about? That have yet to show up here in front of us that allegedly want townhomes and apartments? This is wrong on every level. We have yet to hear some of you advocate publicly for the needs of the people sitting in this very room. When I grew up here, this was a truly rural community. We were safe. I'm now very concerned. Think about it. When was the last time some of you saw me before I started coming here? Think about how quickly this county has transformed to what now is far from rural. If this can happen in just 20 years, I do have genuine concern for our children and the future of where my children need raised. I don't want them to grow up in Norfolk, Virginia. I'm not okay telling myself that as homes are more built, as more homes are built, it's the age of our apparatus that is the reason it needs to be replaced. I'm not okay telling myself it's a responsibility, it's our responsibility to expand our schools for our future generation when we're expanding the county quicker than we could ever expand the schools for our children to have a real education. I want to raise my children in this county. I want what's best for those living here and believe it or not, those venturing and call this wonderful place home. However, these developers are literally destroying our once rural community and leaving us to build. There's no sales tax big enough that can pay for the impact these developers are leaving on me and you. There's approved developments yet to be built, and we don't even have the infrastructure for developments already here. Roadways to support the increased traffic flow or apparatus to protect our community. Board, we've got to do something. Our schools need to be expanded. We need this building to slow down and be under control. If one acre lots doesn't get the job done, then maybe we need to entertain a three acre minimum. We no longer have the adequate infrastructure. I watched this board talk about the lack of apparatus, lack of police units, request for more police officers, schools overflowing, approved housing yet to be constructed, and more. I hope that as you view these upcoming requests for developments, you take that into consideration and vote accordingly. These developments are costing you and me. At what number do you say enough is enough? At what rooftop number do you vote no to the next development? I ask, beg, and plead of you, let's come together, unite, and stand together that this must stop. I seek compromise. I seek a Currituck county with increased infrastructure to be able to send my kids to our public schools for education, not indoctrination, and them to be safe, to have safe communities for our families, lower taxes, and homegrown goods. I promise I'm not here because I have nothing better to do. I love this country, the county, and the people in it. And I promise you, I've got a lot left to give. In closing, I've said it before and I'll say it again. We're here to fight the good fight, to stand by the needs of this community. We're here, united for you. Be united for us. One acre lots, one dwelling on one acre. No wetlands or ponds for open space. No filling wetlands. And lastly, no more developments until this infrastructure is in place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Darrell Astner?
Good evening, sir.
My name is Darrell Astner. I reside at 115 Laurel Court. Chairman White, county manager, county attorney, and maybe one or two other folks here I did get the chance to meet previously to tonight. This is my first night appearing before the board. And I'd like to show off my freshly minted graduation certificate from the Currituck Citizens Academy. I have a few of my class members with me here tonight. And we're here tonight because of the fact that the indoctrination that we've received over 13 weeks has led us to understand that things get done when you get involved. I'm from, I'm in Quail Run. And the Quail Run has a web, a social media page. Moyacque has a social media page. And the issues that are affecting those neighborhoods directly, the residents are going on those webpages and complaining to each other. That's, as the old saying goes, preaching to the choir. I would like to have seen everyone that I've seen complaining here tonight. Although this is my first meeting, I understand this is a pretty significant turnout from what's happened in the past, and I'm glad to see that. The, my background is in education. I retired here two years ago. And I live off of Puddin Ridge Road, which is a two-lane state road. Having just gotten my feet wet, as it were, on how things are done in this county, be it the government, you, our boards, commissions, I am here tonight to express my concern specifically with the developments that have been approved at the end of Puddin Ridge Road. Puddin Ridge Road is a two-lane state road. And initially, the residents were faced with the solar farm being built at the end of the road. Of course, along with the construction of that solar farm, the equipment that ran up and, up and down the road, wiping out mailboxes, street signs, street poles, has, and of course, speeding and driving recklessly caused concern. But as I told my neighbors, solar panels don't have three kids per household, and they don't drive cars up and down the road. Once they've completed, there will be no traffic. However, the developments that have been approved, and I see my time is out, may I have?
You can just wrap it up if you would. Yep. We've got quite a few people behind you.
The, the developments that have already been approved are going to further tax that road. Right now, traffic at 168 in Puddin Ridge waiting to get out in the mornings or come in at night. I understand in the past, there had been an idea that there would be a third lane extended, and it was never done. Also, I understand that the county's position is, well, if the roads get, we approve the developments and if the roads get tore up, well, that's not our problem because it's a state road. And I hope that as county commissioners representing us, that you will take it upon yourselves to understand that your actions have consequences on the citizens that get very little response from the state because they're not here. This is y'all's county. This is the citizens' county. We have to look out for ourselves. And looking for unintended consequences prior to allowing these developments to be built is the only thing I'm asking that the county and the board do. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening. All right. Steve Hedrick?
Good evening.
Steve Hedrick, reside at 296 Summit Farms Trail. My concern, my thought is, I came in tonight, listened to the work session. Of course, we all follow Facebook. We see what goes on. We all hear the complaints. We're talking the one acre lots to slow our density. And I'm perfectly fine with a one acre lot, but what you're proposing is not a one acre lot. 40,000 square feet is not one acre. One acre is 43,560 square feet. So, you're off by 3,560 square feet. So, what does that really mean? About a tenth of an acre. So, what is a tenth of an acre? Okay, it may not be much, but, so for every 10 acres at 40,000, you actually gain another home, gain another lot. And 3,500, that's a pretty sizable house, 3,560 square feet. So, if we're going to, if the commission of the planning, if we're going to use the word, the term, one acre lots, let's make it a one acre lot, not a 40,000 square foot lot. Okay? And that's all I've really got. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time this evening. Darcy Messina. I have my glasses on this time. I can see you, Darcy.
Darcy Messina, 101, white hair and drive, Currituck. I want to say that I agree with everything that the people before me have said. We, we need to slow down the growth here. It's ridiculous. I personally am not in favor of seeing Green Run, town, townhome after townhome after townhome, run down messes, just not. But the real reason I came up to speak tonight was I want to know where our money for our new schools are. The state gave us nothing. I've gotten four different answers why we got nothing. And I'm hoping that somebody here can tell me why Currituck County got nothing. I'm concerned about the bottom line, taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelsey Roberts. Come in. Don't forget the clock.
It's Kelsey Roberts, 107 Arrowhead in Moyacque. I'm here once again in favor of SROs for all of our elementary schools in our county. From what I have learned over the past couple of weeks, especially since the shooting in Nashville at Covenant School, we've spoken with a lot of you all. I very much appreciate all of your all's time. But what we have learned is every, pardon, every middle school and every high school in our county does have an SRO for that school. What's concerning, as a parent of one, soon to be two, in elementary schools here, is why the elementary schools have zero. I understand the need for middle school, for high schools internally. What I see is an even greater concern for elementaries is outside concerns and threats. I feel personally, when I drop my kids off every day, that they're essentially sitting ducks. And as a parent, that does not sit well. We have incredible teachers here in our county as well. And I think as a parent, we should not have to worry.
They turned it down. He adjusted. He adjusted in the back.
There we go. All right. Okay. As a parent, it was stressful. I think the fact that you all elect, or I'm sorry, hire these teachers, they deserve that same respect of safety as well. So, many of the horrible occurrences which we have seen over the news, especially in the past year, they were at elementary schools. They did not have anybody there armed, ready for, God forbid, the worst possible situation which did occur. I struggle to understand, as far as the budget, what would be more important than the safety of my kids and so many other kids? I don't know the total elementary that we have enrolled, but I'm certain it's well over 1,000 to 2,000. So, as a result, I am very hopeful that you all will be able to modify your budget to make sure that every single elementary student in our county is protected with the same SROs that our middle and high schools have. In my opinion, we cannot simply hope for the best. We have to take action. And I simply cannot understand what would be more important in the budget than my children. I agree with what everyone else has said as well, the fact that this growth is coming so quickly. I can't imagine how many more families are going to be a part of the elementary schools. And I struggle to understand why all of that gets approved if we cannot properly protect the kids that are already here and enrolled in our elementary schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I know I'm getting Paul's name wrong. So, I'll let you pronounce that for us because. All right.
This is 114 Surf Scotter Loop.
Thank you, Paul.
All right. Good evening. My name is Paul Solentana, the father of two children that attend Moyacque Elementary School. I'm here to, I'm here today to show my support for the needed school resource officers in our elementary schools. I'm asking to please modify the budget to account for the SROs that are needed to protect our innocent children and dedicated staff members. It is our job at all measures to help protect our youth and staff members that dedicate their time each and every day to ensure that our scholars are safe and successful. Can you think of anything that is more important than keeping our innocent kids and devoted staff safe? To those that have dedicated their time to working on a budget for our schools, I would like to say, thank you. Please remind each other, please remind each other that every important strategic, well-thought-out budget plan that is based on income and expenses, but does not, but does not include a strong focus on safety for our children and staff has missed the opportunity to include one of the most important goals, the well-being and lives of our youth and our staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for all of your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Jamie Thompson. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Thompson at 179 Rivers Ed's Drive in Moyacque. I appreciate y'all giving me the time to speak tonight. I am a mother of multiple children in the Currituck County School District. And myself, along with over 350 other parents per our petition that I handed to Mr. McCord, he has a copy of that. We all strongly believe that it is our responsibility to encourage you to increase the school board budget to include an SRO at every Currituck County Elementary School. Currently, I'm sorry, only our middle schools and high schools have full-time SROs. For years, only middle and high schools have needed a school resource officer. It's simple because the threats have always been within the school itself. Older kids fight, bring drugs, occasionally weapons into schools. Historically speaking, it's only been an issue amongst the middle and high schools. For elementaries, the threats are now coming from outside of the school. There hasn't always been a need for an SRO in the elementary schools because there isn't much violence amongst the students, but times have changed. I know from recent conversations with school board members and commissioners that SROs have been requested for all Currituck County schools and have been denied every time due to a lack of budget or denied state funding due to being a wealthier county. So, let's use some of that wealth towards protecting all Currituck County children and our incredible teachers. Elementary schools are now being threatened from outside sources like school shooters. This is happening because our elementary schools aren't being protected. The need for a deputy in our elementary schools is more important now than it has ever been. Since the elementary school shooting in Uvalde, Texas last year, they implemented SROs in all of their schools, including elementaries. But why would we wait? Why wait until one of our schools is targeted? Why wait until a threat happens right here in Currituck? The population is growing tremendously in our county. Let's get ahead of the problem and start protecting our children and our teachers now. These reasons only scratch the surface of the serious need for SROs at every elementary school in our county. As parents who are no longer willing to sit back and simply hope for the best, we're here demanding action and a resolution until we know without a shadow of a doubt that there is a hired protector for each and every school throughout our county. We cannot simply hope that nothing ever occurs to any of our precious children or teachers, and we, as parents, refuse to let this slide. Think of how many parents, as well as county officials, now regret not taking action before tragedy struck one of their elementary schools. We're here to help create a resolution, and we will not stop until we know our children are better protected each and every day. No parent should have to fear for their child's safety while they're in any Currituck County school. If we consider only the most recent tragedy in Nashville, it's been stated that Covenant School was targeted and chosen to incur such awful violence knowing that school was not protected. There was no security in place. We must remain better prepared to protect those that are most precious to us, our children and our teachers. So, please do the right thing, put our children first, increase the school board budget to include an SRO at every Currituck County school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Richard Barklow. Good evening, sir.
Richard Barklow, 107 Chestnut Drive, Moyacque. I want to say that I agree with basically everything that's been said here today. And I want to add something to it. I've been hearing, I've been coming to the meetings here for the last couple of months, and I've been hearing about apartments. Apartments for workers at the beach. I look at it this way. If somebody wants to build apartments for workers at the beach, build them at the beach. Don't build them here where we have to take and worry about their children going to school and everything. And basically, if you see what low-income apartments bring, if you don't know what's going, it's going to bring, going up to Portsmouth, go up to Chesapeake, go up to Norfolk, go into those areas that have got low-income apartments for basically starting off for workers to work someplace else. When you go into those apartments, you'll find out exactly what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Lastly, I have Connie Hedria? Hedrick, sorry.
Close.
Close. A little extra swoop on the C there.
We get all kinds of variations. I'm Connie Hedrick. I reside at 296 Summit Farms Trail in Moyacque, North Carolina. Been a resident here since 2014. I'm a native of Norfolk, Virginia. Reared in Chesapeake and kind of brought pelts and stuff down to the Moyacque greenery when we did nothing but trap because we were a poor family in a poor community right on Cedar Road, right where Bells Mill Road meets Tidewater Community College, where it was a trailer when I was growing up in fourth grade. So, I've seen the development from here to there, and I am a working-class family. My husband and I currently own a business in North Car, in Currituck. We have Real Vision's realty team. So, as I've come here and I'm a property owner in Summit Farms Trail, I've seen lots of things happening that I didn't know what were really happening and what the process was for it happening. So, I'm here to really commend everybody for being here. First of all, the, the solar farms, I understand the principle behind the solar farms. But over a 30-year period, I do not know what affordability the land development is going to bring to this county. There's going to be a lot to have to be done after that 30 years. Again, like Mr. Hedrick previous to me said, if you're going to say a one-acre parcel, then let it be a one-acre parcel. Because as we know, what drives housing in this county will take advantage of every 10th acre and every house that is out there. What has changed my life as a single mom and now a business owner and happily married with five grandchildren that are in Currituck County schools is homeownership. It's homeownership. It doesn't matter what that home is. It's the safety, the certainty, the advantage of changing the culture, the certainty, and the development of your family and who you are. We have a responsibility to this county to develop jobs, a master plan, strategies to get that plan with our consumers and our citizens and our ever-growing, as we all know, global community. We are not little Currituck anymore. But that doesn't mean we can't sanctify and develop the culture that got us where we are. So, I appreciate your attention. I'm learning. I'm going to get my little certificate over there so I know Economics 101. But I'm going to challenge you to look at an economic development plan that's jobs, that's strategic planning, that's infrastructure, that's jobs. that's jobs, that's strategic planning, that's infrastructure, that's jobs, that those apartments that are not going to be at the beach. But my 21-year-old grandson that graduated from Currituck High School has a job to stay with his home, his mom and his family. So I appreciate all of what y'all are doing. You'll hear more from me. So I appreciate all that you're doing, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's all I have signed up this evening. Is there anyone else that came in late that did not sign up that would like to speak this evening? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting this evening and move into commissioner comments this evening. I'll start out to my far left this evening. Commissioner Payton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. One thing I will address is the last person that came up here. One thing we did a few years back, which I was glad we did, is we had, I think we had community meetings throughout the county. We brought the, we brought all the citizens in to tell us what, you know, what they wanted to see in different parts of the county, and we scored them. We had, we put stickies up there, which was a fun exercise and a fun tool, and the, the public and the citizens had a great time. But that let us know what their interests were is, is that they wanted more business, you know, what, what was important infrastructure-wise, and that gave us a good roadmap to start working towards, which, again, it was fun. We did, had good involvement all through the county when we did that, which was nice. Secondly, uh, let's hear, um, another comment that was made, I will say this, every time a developer has spoken to me about wanting to build something in this county, especially low in the Currituck, but all through the county, the first thing I tell them is our citizens and myself have no interest of you providing housing, um, or for us providing housing for us to take care of your children and all your needs in the county. So that's not what we want. And we're not looking to provide housing for the Dare County workforce. Uh, what we're trying to find is we're trying to find some good, um, homes that people starting on the school systems or law enforcement or wherever, low-paying jobs can get a nice place to start with as a building block toward homeownership. So I've said that to everybody out there that's talked to me, and I stand behind that because that's my true feelings as well. Um, and I know when we went to Raleigh, we visited some state legislators one time. We talked about the tier three status, which the county was, was given, and we asked about that formula. And one of the, one of the skewed, um, parts of that was the unemployment factor. Um, Currituck County has a very low unemployment rate, which does not really reflect the true citizens in the county because I believe a lot of people work up in Virginia and we're so close, that we asked if we could have that formula redone to take that factor out of it to try to get us back down to a tier two. And I guess the comment that was given to us is there was not enough interest at the state level to redo the formula. So we're still beating that drum, but, um, we tried to see what we could do to get that tier, uh, because it's skewed, it's skewed information that's, that's getting us at the tier three, which it doesn't make sense. Um, and the last thing I'll just talk about is, um, I do reside on the Alamo Regional Health Board, and the budget, we just had our budget workshop, and the budget is now posted for anyone who wants to see it. But one of the things that's going to affect all the counties out there is, um, for the past 20 years, the fees and permits for food service, wells, septic, anything out there, the fees have stayed the same for 20 years. And the region has been operating in a $500,000 deficit because they weren't collecting enough to take care of the fees and the permits. So that's going to be adjusted. There was a long sheet of every item out there. There's going to be slight increases on fees to cover that, um, because they've been dipping into the fund, uh, uh, fund balance to try to overcome that big deficit. So that's one change that all the counties are going to see. Um, and I do own a business in the county too, and what I'm thankful for is I've been able to hire two high school students so far to get them in a trade field, which they're tickled to death, and, um, that's something I can be happy that I'm trying to keep our children in this county and working in the place in the county for a good paying job and hopefully have a nice place for them to stay one day. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Hendry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. Do you know where in Currituck County you can play billiards, table tennis, or pickleball daily, Monday through Friday? If you're 55 or older, the answer is the senior citizens. There's also art, bingo, sewing, yoga, Mexican dominoes, Scrabble, horseshoes cards, and a lot more fun things for our seniors to do. They also plan outings for the seniors' enjoyment. This month, you can sign up to go to a Tides baseball game. You can have lunch at the Black Pelican and then go shopping. They've got a fishing trip to Oregon Inlet, and I heard Mr. Beaumont talking about fishing. They've got-
I'm not, I'm not old enough.
Yeah, you are. You're 55.
So premature, right.
They have the Alamo Senior Games coming up in Edington, and there's other specific activities for people living in Knox Island and Powell's Point. Last Wednesday, while attending the Senior Citizens Advisory Board's quarterly meeting, we were given an update on their outreach programs that they offer for our seniors here in the county. And like I say, you just have to be 55, so I think most of us are in that category. Uh, the senior citizens, along with AARP, were able to file taxes free for 280 of our residents here in the county. They're also working with the Alamo Commission to be able to have a pet food program for elderly people who own pets, and this has helped out an awful lot, too. Yes, the senior citizen is here to assist our seniors and to offer not only fun activities, but also needed services. But sometimes it's not always fun and games. So our Senior Citizens Center, the Social Service Department, will be participating with the Alamo Commission on June the 9th in Elizabeth City for the Elder Abuse Walk. This is to bring awareness to elder abuse in the area. They also will have vendors and speakers at this event with lots of information for people. And hopefully, this might have spiked someone's interest in the senior citizen, so please join in the fun. They're always also looking for citizens who would like to serve on the advisory board. I think they have a couple of openings, and if you would be interested, interested in this, give the county a call or call the Senior Service Director, Stacy Joseph, and they'll be happy to assist you and give you all the information that's needed. And I would like to say it is nice to finally see people in the audience coming out and speaking. We do appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Jarvis?
All right, thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank all the citizens that showed up on April 20th for NC DOT's public meeting concerning the revision of the intersection between 158 and Edgewater Road. Uh, I was unable to attend, but Commissioner Payton went to both meetings and took the heat, and I appreciate that. Uh, and I also appreciate the many citizens who have reached out to me with their concerns, their comments, their suggestions, and numerous questions. Uh, I have spoken with the lead engineer, and I have voiced the concerns that so many of you sent to me and expressed to me, and, uh, I believe they are listening. I believe that they are in the phase where they're trying to truly make this redo safer, better, and with as few impacts as possible. Uh, doing nothing is not an option. Uh, that is a very dangerous intersection as anyone who's been trying to go to any of those businesses right across from each other, from the Get Go to the Distillery, to the Dollar General, to the Carrier, um, uh, Plant and Sun Realty, all right there while people like me are just trying to live their lives. Something's got to be done. Change is not easy to stomach, but these types of intersections work all over North Carolina, uh, and I believe with the addition of lights to control traffic going north and traffic heading south, I believe that this is a very safe option, and look forward to working in partnership with NC DOT to help keep my neighbors and our visitors as safe as possible. I also want to thank our staff for all the work you put in today for our work session. Uh, I know the tireless effort that you have had with the many irons and the fires that we, uh, put upon you, and I'm thankful for the work that you did today. I, too, would love to see one acre lots, true one acre lots. Um, and I think that is just one tool in the toolbox, as, uh, Mr. Kemp told us, there are many ways we can manage growth. Uh, and Ms. Hendrick, uh, you spoke about a visioning plan. We did a visioning plan. We did a visioning plan my first year on the board. I charged this board to stick with our visioning plan and truly manage growth. We are not going to stop growth, but we have many tools in our toolbox to do better than we've done to manage this growth and let our facilities catch up and help our schools excel. So I, uh, want you to know that that visioning plan is there. I encourage you to go read it, and hopefully, we will do a better job in the next few months of sticking to it. And finally, I'm going to speak to work, uh, workforce housing. Every time I have a conversation with someone in Dare County, they mention my neck of the woods, Lower Currituck, and how they would love to find some land for them to put workforce housing. And it, it disgusts me that they are not willing to solve their own problem, but they believe that people who live in our beautiful county should do all their living and all their business in Dare County, but how dare, how dare they send them to Dare County schools? Well, I'm here to tell you I will fight for Lower Currituck with all that I have. Workforce housing for Dare County is something I will never, ever, ever sign on to in Lower Currituck. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Let me, can I just add real quick in a DOT meeting real quick? Um, I just want to add to the meeting I was at with DOT. After they heard all a lot of comments, they did pull me aside, and, um, they told me that, um, they heard the concerns, and they were, they already made some tweaks and adjustments while we were there, and they're going to still make some more, and they're going to be presented. But they did tell me they heard, they talked about lights and some other things. So DOT heard the people that were there, and they were addressing it that night, and they still are, so.
And they're still listening. That site is still active. You can go on that link for the project on NC DOT's website, and you can make your comments there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bumma?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, had the pleasure last Monday of attending the Fire EMS Advisory Board meeting, and, um, Ike, did you, were you there for the demo and the presentation?
I was a tourism advisory board.
Oh, that's right. You were like triple decking.
Yes.
So, um, we were fortunate enough to get a visit by the hazmat rapid response team, which is out of Williamson, I believe. And so, um, you know, for those that have been in the county a little bit, um, I'll go back to one of the accidents that we had down in Lower Currituck, and it was a, a fuel tanker that-
Oh, that, that rolled, yes.
The gentleman fell asleep, missed the turn, rolled the truck, and it dumped, I want to say, like 25,000 gallons of fuel onto the ground. Um, it was quite, number one, it took a long time to get that cleaned up. It was a major excavation project, hauling the material off and all that kind of stuff. The rapid response team, which I did not realize what kind of value that they provide us, first of all, it's completely funded by the state. Um, if they can bill their efforts to the insurance company, they will do that. But they literally come on site and will oversee the mitigation to the point where there is a mitigation contractor on site. And I don't think, Ike, we have that lined up, right? I mean, we've got hurricane response and debris cleanup, but do we, we don't have a, a hazmat restoration.
We, we, we use-
I'm looking to Assistant County Manager Rebecca Gay, who came to-
From emergency.
Administration from the Emergency Management, and she's saying, no, we do not.
We use, I could, I could, if I could add, we do use them in, in the past, and we have multiple, uh, at the jail as well as at the sheriff's office. Like, all of us have to go through annual hazmat training. We're at the awareness level. We have multiple that instructors for that, too, that assist with those guys. So we do have the use of them as well as we have a few of us, and well as fire and EMS that are advanced.
Well, well, they bring an 18-wheeler, a, um, 40-foot-long trailer, enclosed trailer. They bring, um, other trailers worth of everything from, you know, booms to whatever for hazardous material cleanup. So probably somehow we need, I mean, certainly Mary Beth is, is well aware of their, their capabilities. Uh, they even have a robot. So, um, they went through some of the harder cases of, of accidents that have occurred, uh, but it was, it was impressive what the state has to help back us up. And their average response cost, I was stunned, was $5,000, and that's with 15 people and like four vehicles and trucks. So let's not do it ourselves anymore. Let's call them in.
Well, Lower Currituck's previous chief, Bill Jones, was part of that state, um, and he was, he responded to that overturned tanker, but he actually taught the, and he was part of that hazmat group that responded.
It, it was an amazing presentation, great group. So anyway, it was, it was wonderful. Um, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. McCord?
I've got a few things. Um, I'm glad that a lot of people showed up tonight. Like I said, we, we do listen to your feedback. Uh, we not only listen to it here, and, you know, we hear it. Sometimes people call our phones or social media or different things. Um, just a couple of facts, as Commissioner Jarvis spoke about the, the south end of the county, that last three and a half miles, I had a lady that attended that meeting reach out to me, and she wanted to know how many tickets that we had wrote, Currituck County Sheriff's Office in that area from July 26, 2022 to last Friday, right at, um, just say roughly 9:50, uh, give or take. And, um, she said, well, how many do you think the Highway Patrol? And I'm, this is not a dig at the Highway Patrol because I work with those guys and I respect those guys. Um, and I said, they probably wrote less. And she said, well, that's all they do is write tickets and recs. And I said, well, they don't have as much staff as we do. And she came back with a number today that she got from the district office. Um, Lieutenant Edwin Forbes, um, they had actually wrote 480. So almost 1,500 people have been ticketed in that 45 zone for that three and a half mile. So it is, for anybody that you'll see on social media, especially on the south pages or whatever, nobody's working that traffic. What, I mean, they're, you know, we're less than, what, nine months, and we're, you know, about five, what is that, 300? Well, we're not doing math, but it's a little bit too much. My brain, it was a long day. Uh, I was working on the grant all day, so I kind of had a headache when we got here. But believe it or not, 71% of our calls that go to dispatch are traffic-related, of somebody driving C and R, somebody driving possibly impaired, somebody speeding through a school zone, somebody speeding. So 71%, almost three quarters of the calls that go to dispatch are something to do about somebody driving like an idiot, is the basic term to put. So that being said, like I said, that area is heavily worked where we've had some bad accidents and everything. Um, it's getting summertime. We got new stuff opening. There's more traffic on the road. So be safe. Wear your seatbelts. Seatbelts save lives. Um, and like you said, your fire department, the guys are out there, and the public safety, from the first responders to the calling 911, um, they do a great job in this county. Our EMS and fire, state of the art. And last topic, the SROs. Um, I will say one thing, um, and I'm trying not to be too biased on one side. Uh, if some, if some tragic event happened at one of our schools, which pray to God, never will, there's sick people in this world. Unfortunately, I don't know how somebody hurts a kid, but if an officer is at the school, the response time is zero because they're already there. I wouldn't want that.
All right, thank you. No one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, too, appreciate the attendance here tonight. Kevin mentioned feedback. Sometimes it might be suggested it's pushback because we do need to be prodded at times to get things done. And believe me, we do listen. Um, we've had, um, I, I just want to address something Ms. Messina said about why we didn't get any state funding, and Commissioner Payton touched on it, tier three status. And I have brought that up before, uh, for years. Why is Currituck tier three? And the answer that I have got, whether you call it smart alecky or not, is, well, your tax rate's in the 40 cent, the state average is 70 cent, and the national average is 99 cent. So you've got a lot of room. You could raise your tax rate if you wanted to, to, to make up that difference. And I said, well, that's not the right attitude as far as county employ, uh, citizens are concerned. Uh, on a good note, two new businesses have opened in Moyoc since our last meeting, the Dunkin' Donuts and the 7-Eleven. And 7-Eleven has started maybe a price war on, uh, gas because it was 314, but they were sold out this morning. And they were sold out last night except for premium gas. But there are some other new businesses coming, and- And that is talking about that economic diversity that we so desperately need. And one last thing, Commissioner Jarvis, workforce housing, we depend on what that definition is. And Mayock and Crawford Township has really become workforce housing for Hampton Roads. So it's countywide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think somebody begs to differ with you in the audience out there. They probably, maybe moved here, I don't know. Anyway, you know, this is America. And as part of that, as part of that right, as part of a citizen of this great nation, you have the right to live where you want to live and to own property and own a home. That is not the case in many places throughout the world. So, you know, as we talk about development and growth and those things, we have to keep that in mind. There are a lot of people in this room that came from somewhere else and moved to this county. Whether your parents moved here and you were brought in as a child, you moved, your parents brought you here as a child. Kitty, you were not born and raised here. You married into it, you married into it. You're stationed here, right? Paul grew up in Miami. Kevin, your parents brought you here? My parent, I came here to get away from my ex-wife, but that's a longer story. Owen's the only one that's
Because Brad boy raised here.
Multi-generational, right, right. And so we are a melting pot at the end of the day. And we exhibit all those things that is America. So, you know, we've heard you. You know, we're working through that, whether it's a true one acre or a 40,000-acre square foot lot. As Commissioner Jarvis said, we are working through that. And as you've seen this evening, for those that attended our work session, we put in some other pitfalls, if you will, to limit the amount of development that can happen on a piece of land. So we are working through that. That will go through revisions and changes. All of those things take time. You want us to be prudent when we do that because if we move too fast, we make mistakes on things. We've seen it many times. We've had to come back. If you've been watching these meetings for a while, you will see us make mistakes and have to amend the UDO. It happens all the time. And it's because some, an unintended consequence was put into a law or an ordinance or development ordinances, and we have to fix that. Owen, I think everybody's covered Tier 3. It is interesting. We've been Tier 3 for a while and it's a bit of a misnomer, three being the best, one being the worst, or nothing at all. So three is the best possible financial situation for a county. So that cuts out all kinds of state funding and grant money for us, especially when it comes to things like schools. Now Bobby Hayning, our state senator, when his first year in the House, somehow managed to get $11 million in the budget for us for schools. But for those of you remember, that budget was never signed into law by the governor and we operated on the previous year's budget. So we never did get that money. We have hired a lobbying firm to actually go out and try and get us money or get an appropriation from the state to help us with things like this school. And certain years, certain things are what they like to fund. This year, apparently, it's infrastructure. So they are going to hopefully make it a nice appropriation for us to expand our airport, which makes us money for the first time ever. But it is making us money and that expansion will allow us to hopefully make more money off of it. It also frees up funds that we would have had to have used in the airport to go to other areas. So it has, you know, a positive effect on us down the line somewhere else. Someone mentioned 30-year solar lifespan. This board went and put a moratorium on solar for a while while we decided how to deal with solar, how to screen it, how to do things, whether or not we actually wanted solar. At the end of the day, solar takes up land that could have been farmed, but probably is no longer going to be farmed. That's why the farmer leased that land or sold that land to a solar facility. And it is maybe better than housing than having to look at that because as anyone that watched at our meeting tonight, you can use density of one unit, one house for every three acres on ag land. So 100 acres will still support a lot of homes if you think about it. Where now it's solar, it doesn't ask anything of us. It may have something explode and the fire department has to show up, transformer. But that's probably fairly rare, hopefully. It does generate income for us in the form of tax revenue and it doesn't ask anything from us like schools. So, but 30 years is probably not the end of a lifespan. That is the warranty period for a solar panel that operates at basically 100% or 90%. After that, it starts to degrade and we don't actually know how long that land will be under a lease. We have built in money, basically a bond, when they build these things to be able to remove that when it happens so that if a farmer like Owen leased the land to someone, his children or grandchildren, if he's gone, don't have to deal with removing that. So, you know, most of the things on it, they say are reusable, steel pilings, aluminum, copper cable.
And the costs for removal are reevaluated.
Right, and the costs are reevaluated, thank you. Silicone, so we, you know, they, there will be a market for that stuff in the future as those things start to wear out. That technology is new enough that we don't see it wearing out right now. So I just wanted to address that since someone brought it up. This past week, myself, we've all talked about things we do. The commissioners go to a lot of meetings all the time, it seems like. This past Thursday, I was at a Corolla Civic Association meeting. I was reprimanded for not being at the Citizens Academy to talk to them. I was at their very first meeting and would have much rather been at that meeting with you guys than at the Corolla Civic Association meeting. Actually, it was a great meeting with the CCA. They had probably 40, 50 people in attendance. And so it was nice to be able to speak to the room about things going on in the county that Corolla folks don't necessarily see as opposed to what people see on the mainland. I also spoke at the Republican Party. And while I was there, the sheriff was there. And I've asked Ike, our county manager, to have the sheriff come in and speak to us. The amount of information he gave us in there was pretty amazing. The responses to calls, and you two were there, how much they do is unbelievable with the amount of manpower they have. And so, you know, when they ask for four deputies, it's understandable why when you hear the amount of calls that they go to, the amount of tickets they write, domestic disturbances and all those things. And some of that's going to be proportional to growth, you know, there's no doubt about it. Let's see, tourism. Oh, as Ike mentioned, we had a tourism advisory board. Those are open to the public. Not much happens at those, honestly. It's if you're not into tourism, it's not going to interest you. But one of the things we do is an event assistance program. If you want to put on an event in this county that brings people in from outside of the county, we have set money aside to help pay for those events through tourism as a way to put money back into the local economy by hiring hopefully a local vendor to come in, whatever that vendor may be. It could be a band, it could be food trucks, it could be any number of things, renting tents, all these things that cost money to you. But hopefully, we offset that cost a great deal, if not entirely, through tourism dollars. And you just have to advertise and get people into this county, which is the goal of tourism. And ultimately, what we want to do here on the mainland, we would like to see tourism grow here as opposed to just being on the beach. We have our ballfields and other things going on. And as that happens, it brings in other businesses that go with that in support of these tourist efforts that come in here. So we would like to have that building or that base to add to our economy. And in that vein, we are going to be doing a rebranding or a branding, I guess, of Currituck mainland. You know, Currituck is known as the sportsman's paradise. We advertise Corolla as the Currituck Outer Banks. We've since switched this past year to advertise that as Corolla rather than Currituck Outer Banks because no one actually knows where the Currituck Outer Banks is. So we're switching that up. We're going to bring in a, someone to help us brand this county. So as we go through that process, those meetings, some of that will be public. And we welcome your input to understand how you view your county and what you see. You know, this used to be a fishing Mecca and it's coming back, but it's not as good as it was. So duck hunting is not what it used to be, mostly because of temperatures more than anything, I'd say, as opposed, I'm not a duck hunter, but this is just from listening. So all of those things are going on right now. Selena, you hit on the land use. So we do have our land use plan. If you go on our county website, it's on there. It's a very big document. And it describes every part of our land, whether it's GB, light industrial, heavy industrial, residential, ag, all of these things. And we throw around acronyms like single-family mainland, SFM, single-family outer banks. All of those things are described in there. So we do have an economic plan for this county. We do, we had a work session this evening talking about that. And I talked about it at the opening, that we want to do more for economic development here. And we're going to continue to do that, to do more for economic development here, to encourage businesses here and support those businesses that are here. We'd much rather see mom and pop shop open up than a big corporate entity. That is not who we are. You know, it's nice that we've got a 7-Eleven and hopefully one day we'll get a Taco Bell. But at the end of the day, you know, mom and pop shops are what this county is about and has always been about. We will certainly have, you know, franchise businesses here like 7-Eleven. And Rural Farms opened today for anybody that's into their fried chicken, their salty fried chicken. So, you know, that's another business, as Owen was speaking about earlier, that's opened up. So we've got things going on. One of the deterrents right now in the northern end of the county to business coming in is the lack of sewage. We've been working on that sewage plant since I've been here as a commissioner and we are finally getting some headway and going to hopefully get another appropriation from the state to expand our sewer plant. And the board is not interested in allocating that sewage for housing development. That is one of the things that comes with sewage, you have to pay for it. Well, if we can get an appropriation from the state, it changes the game. We don't have to pay for it by adding people on to it, end users at the end of the day. So we can reserve that for commercial. We have quite a few commercial entities that are interested in coming here. Additionally, we have a language tracking through to remove Currituck Station. So for those of you who don't know what that is, that is what is called a mega site. And it's up in Mayock and it was designed by a previous board to this one. And after talking with my fellow commissioners about it, there would be no love lost in getting rid of that. It is not what we are, having a million-square-foot building out there potentially for heavy industrial, could be a car plant, whatever. While it may provide jobs, it's going to provide a ton of truck traffic at the end of the day. And we are not interested in that. So that language is coming through to remove that. In addition to the land use plan, we have small area plans. And that, Mayock has a small area plan. And it was devised with meetings, as Mike was talking about earlier, with members of the community. So we have also decided to look at that again. I've said it many times, we need to relook at that and make sure that it meets the values of the people that are here today. And so we will be moving forward with that after the budget. That seems to be all-consuming because it's a two-year budget and that's right now. Once we get through with that, other things start to move through and give priority to. So we'll be working through small area plans and some other plans, as I've said, in the next year. And these things take a while. Obviously, they want to be well thought out. We have lots of community meetings to understand what it is that you guys want to see in your community. So with that, I have talked a lot. I will sign off. Thank you all for hearing us out this evening and move on to the county manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Thursday night was the closing night for Citizens Academy. You've already seen one of the top members of the class along with this other row of members as well. They spent 11 weeks hearing from and touring 24 county departments and agencies. I have to say that Citizens Academy is having, is showing the purpose for which it was created, which was to help educate citizens about their county government and to make them comfortable and become an engaged and engaged participants of their county government. And so we're starting to see a turn. We got finally people coming back to meetings when we've been for so long in a room with empty chairs. It was a fun time Thursday night. We played, as we did last year, a game called Budgetopolis. It's facilitated by the UNC School of Government. It's actually, some of you commissioners have played it. It's actually where the members of the class broke up into teams and became counties. It's a board game, but they had to, first of all, establish the values for their tabletop county. And using those values, then they had to establish a balanced budget. Just like you, taking the values of this county, have to establish a balanced budget. And all during the game, there are little curveballs thrown at them such as, COVID has hit and you've just all of a sudden received $4 million more dollars. Well, that's great, but then the next curveball is taking away revenue or something else you've got to pay for. So during the course of the evening, they were having to make, in a simple way, but not unlike what we're doing on a staff level, putting a budget together and not much unlike what you will be doing over the next couple of months, deciding how to weigh the values of the county, what to fund, how to fund it, why to fund it, and do so by balancing the community's needs with a reasonable revenue rate. So that was a lot of fun. We got a lot of good comments afterwards from participants. Number one comment I received from several who stayed after to speak with me was how pleased they were to see that they have a county staff that is excited and very interested in what they do for the citizens. And so that was very gratifying to hear. Appreciate those members who turned out tonight and I hope they encourage. And those who are here tonight who have not participated in Citizens Academy will do it again next year. The first year we had 15 students, this year we had 32. So we're growing exponentially. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Right, right. Thank you. One thing you brought up that I forgot to mention, it was talked about tonight, the SROs. Myself and a couple of other commissioners will be meeting later this week with the schools, just kind of a delegation from us and them and the sheriff's department to talk about school safety. And I would encourage anyone that does support that to just email us. Probably announcing it on TV is not the best idea, thinking forward about, you know, that nobody knows whether or not we have SROs at every school, but it's now been announced in two meetings that we don't. So if there's anybody else out there, yeah, we get it. Well, anyone looking to do harm now knows. Right, so now we really know. But anyway, we heard you, obviously, and we're having that discussion as part of our budget. So thank you guys for coming out for that. Megan, I
Nothing to report.
Oh, no, I got, I got you something. I got you something. So I called you today.
She was getting off.
She thought you were getting off easy. One of the things we've heard thrown around is moratorium on building.
Yes.
So I called our attorney today and asked her to gin up on that a little bit because she might not have dove into moratoriums much in her short tenure here. And talk about how those work and what they do and when we can use them and when we can't use them.
Right, so a moratorium is another word for a pause on development. And the North Carolina general statutes do allow that. However, there are a lot of exceptions. And one major exception that a lot of people don't realize is you cannot place a moratorium on residential development while you're trying to come up with a new development plan or an ordinance such as the one-acre lots that we've been talking about. We cannot halt development to do something like that. However, that does not apply to commercial industrial development. And it also, for residential development, you can place a moratorium on that if it's for a lack of public infrastructure. So you are able to do that. Now, it is temporary. Typically, it's about a 60-day timeframe. Then if it's much longer than that, you're kind of infringing on constitutional rights. So really, as far as the growth that everybody's talking about, the residential growth, the county can't do anything as far as stopping that while we work on like a one-acre lot or something else, amending the UDO, things like that.
Okay, and then the other part of that is adequate public facilities. We hear people talk about that. And we have an allowance for inadequate public facilities to be used to stop development. But when we do that, we have to then, I'll let you explain it a little more legally than me, why when we use, if we use that to stop development, what happens, for instance?
What do you mean?
Well, so we say, an applicant comes before us and says, you know, they want to do a neighborhood of 300 homes. And we say, well, we don't have adequate public facilities. We don't have enough room in the schools.
Right.
So when we do that
So you can do a moratorium for that until you get the adequate public facilities in place for that development.
Right, so in that, in that case, the problem with all of it, and I bring this up, is it has been talked about that we don't have adequate public facilities. A lot of times, people focus on schools. It can be sewage, it can be fire, it can be police, it could be EMS, it could be a number of things. number of things. But we don't necessarily determine that at a board level. It is determined by experts. The school system comes to us and says, we don't have room, for instance, in our schools anymore for a neighborhood. Well, now we know that there's not adequate public facilities. The sheriff comes in and says, I can't, my call volume has exceeded my ability to respond to them. Now we don't have adequate public facilities in the form of police protection. Or the fire department comes to us and says, we can't handle it for EMS calls, you know, emergency medical services, we're rolling too much, we need a new station, we need two new ambulances, we need, you know, 12 more personnel to be able to handle the call volume. That is what I, when we talk about that, that's what happens. It has to be one of those bigger triggers by someone else that's a professional to tell us that we cannot do that. If we use that and if we invoke that, we have to fix it. It is a trigger for us to begin to fix it. So we don't have a whole lot of time, as the county attorney alluded to, to deal with that. We have to move forward and put a plan in place. Now, if it's a school, it's going to take a while to design a school, find land, do whatever to build that. If it's EMS personnel, we need to maybe locate land if we don't have a piece of land to deal with that. So that's why I had her bring some of that up this evening to talk about it so people understand when you throw those terms out, they have meaning and what that meaning is.
And it's quite an extensive process to get a moratorium. You have to do a public hearing and the ordinance has to be very specific in what is required in there. So it's quite a process.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There's a couple of other aspects of that that I think have some merit. And when you, when you're referring to the inadequate public facilities, you're talking about our ordinance, correct? I'm going to ask Commissioner Etheridge, who was young when that came into existence. We love poking fun at that one, but, but that got put in there. There was a reason behind how that came about and if you could please provide the background from what is now just, you know, heard frequently.
Well, in 1994, the Board of Commissioners at that time hired Paul Tischler and Associates to do a capital needs analysis on what school buildings, primarily school buildings, would cost per new home built. And when I first came on the board in December of 94, we were staring down at three large developments. And we had written, Jack Semino and I had put together the adequate public facilities ordinance and got the previous board to adopt it. And we immediately, in, I believe, January invoked it and slowed down those three large developments. One of them was Eagle Creek. They had vested rights, but the developer first came in asking, instead of the 429 lots that were vested, 800 homes. And then he came back with 601 homes and we said, no, if we cannot control our own destiny in terms of the density, we, we don't want to go down that road. And Currituck was the first county to have an adequate public facilities ordinance in North Carolina. And I remember Jack Semino and I went to various counties in the state talking about adequate public facilities as a tool that you could use. On the flip side of it, and Bob alluded to it and so did the county attorney, when you invoke it, you've got a time clock that has started and it's two years that you've got to do something to meet that need or else you're in violation of state law and the developer or whoever it is can, can take you to court over it. So, you know, it's a planning tool. That's what it was in, planned, that was what it was designed to do, to be a planning tool so we could plot our growth in our schools primarily. And I've got to say, up till about 2019, it tracked the growth in the schools very well. And we then saw with the type of homes that were being built, like in Mayock from Ryan Homes, the absorption rate was so much greater than anything we had ever seen. Instead of 30, 40 new houses a year, we were seeing 300 new houses a year. And that's what kind of skewed it off some.
I will say historically, in this, we were talking about Ben Woody earlier this evening. Ben Woody had plotted, based upon the socioeconomic analysis and the US Census data, we knew, this county has known, maybe not quite to the extent, although I think it was on the upper curve of growth, that was a potential, this county knew what was going to happen. So since I've been a commissioner, shoot, it's almost nine years now, we've known what's been coming. And the other aspect is, and Commissioner White alluded to this, you know, what is adequate and inadequate? And we can discuss it all day long. The former county manager, Dan Scanlon, said, do you build a new school when you go 1% over capacity? So that's open for debate, that's open for discussion, which is why when those projects come before us, expert witness testimony is brought up to be able to, you know, make their expert, you know, witness, I guess, determination. So Ike talked way more than that.
I read the other day where a figure of 169% of capacity is a figure that's being used now for new school construction because of the cost that we're seeing with school construction. And when we talk about high-density development, there's a new development that's been approved on, off of Dominion Boulevard in Chesapeake, Shalali Road, 888 units on 130 acres. That's a high density.
That's high density.
All right, thank you. We've, we've had quite the commissioner's report. Thank you all for putting up with us this evening. Right? All right, does the board need a break before we go to new business? Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess.
We still have people here.
All right, let's get this show on the road again. Settle down. All right, next item up this evening is new business. Item one, consider adoption of the Currituck County Comprehensive Parks and Rec Master Plan is presented on April 3, 2023 by McGill Consulting.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on that.
Sure.
A lot of the material that they went over, if we adopt this, I mean, I strongly agreed with a lot of it, but there were some of it that I didn't agree with. So I mean, just by, if we adopt this, I mean, we're not adopting, we are going to do A through Z.
No, I mean, I don't think that you're bound, this is recommendations and a plan that we can implement as the board sees desirable.
So we adopt the concept.
Certainly.
Yeah, this is a plan to follow.
Consent.
Gotcha. I just wanted to make sure that's what we were adopting.
Okay. But please let, let us know what those issues are.
Yeah, we can, we'll talk. I mean, like I said, I mean, just there's a few things that I don't see, you know, when they had, and I, the commissioner sits on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and I talked to Weeks and them on a regular.
Those people are going to call your people.
Yes. I'll put my people with your people. I'll move for approval if there's no presentation.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure we weren't signing up for the whole show.
Next item is board appointments. We had a Fire MNS advisory to reappoint Steve Van Heist and George Thies to serve, serve full two-term years expiring 5/31/2025. And so I just need a motion to reappoint those two people to the Fire MNS board.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to move to appoint Jimmy Kason to fill the unexpired term as Knott's Island's representative to that board. His first term would expire 5/31/2024.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, last is the consent agenda. Any comments, questions or concerns on the consent agenda?
What is this?
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we need to go to closed session. You had that language in front of you?
I make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A5 to establish or instruct county staff concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the county in negotiating the material terms of a contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase or exchange consisting of 2.93 acres located at 129 Maple Road, Maple, North Carolina and owned by Joshua Neal to be used for any public purpose and GS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the county attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, with that, we're going to go to closed session. You didn't have to wait long to the end of the meeting. You guys can't hang out for that part, so we have to meet with the attorney. So I'm going to kick you guys out.